Yeah.
So call the meeting to order here at seven thirty two P M on May second, twenty twenty two. So first I'll do a roll call. Vice Chair Tesman.
Present.
Commissioner Chris Aliff.
Present.
Commissioner David Goodman is absent. Commissioner Daryl Lambert.
Present.
Commissioner Niraj Mather. Is absent. And Commissioner Steve Smith. Is absent. So kind of a motion to excuse the absent commissioners.
I Commissioner Smith texted me and said that he will be attending late today. Baseball practice is running over, so.
Okay. Then kind of a motion to excuse. Well, Commissioner Goodman already has an excuse. So basically we're excusing Commissioner Niraj Mather.
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
Now in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So just as a. Point of. Explanation, we'll give three. Excused absences and then we'll start not excuse the absences. So. I'm curious, Jason, have you heard from Commissioner Mather over the last couple of meetings?
The most recent communication I have is that he's had some been having some trouble getting into city email. So we're working to resolve that one. Our I T department is so. I believe he's aware of the meetings, but that's something we'll clear up. Hopefully, when we get his email access restored.
Okay, okay. All right, pressing on. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written? For today.
So move to approve the agenda as written for today.
Give a second.
Second.
Call favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So today's agenda is approved. Are there any? Public comments for items not on the agenda? Seen. No hands up, hearing none. No comments. We'll move on to the council liaison report.
Ready greetings. Today I had just one thing that the actually two things I should probably mention because I don't think that. The planning commission has meant since the council took a tour of the city with staff. To a number of different project sites that are either proposed or already have some level of work being done on them. Those would include things like we went to the water treatment plant and we got a nice tour around. That was pretty cool. I learned that there are this is just like a P S A that there are manhole covers that if you take them off and you stick your head in and take a breath that that would be lethal. So just just saying. Uh. I don't remember which gas it was.
Probably meth, yeah.
H two S.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
Oh, really? There's just all five, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Welcome to my life.
Right. Uh, but on a on a brighter note, we also went to Centennial Park where they are going to be installing. The all inclusive playgrounds. We got to see exactly where it is and see kind of some of the plans for for what that's going to be. And that's pretty exciting. The the first picture I saw, I was a little bit underwhelmed with what they were going to do, but the updated versions look pretty cool. I don't think it's been fully finalized. There are still a few parts that I think. They need to make sure that they can get on order and a few little details like that. But I believe that they will be breaking ground. I think maybe Mr. Rogers or others can correct me, but I believe within the next year was the plan for getting started on that.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Let's see what else. I feel like there's at least a couple of other things that we saw, but anyway, if thinking back, we'll mention it. The other big thing that I wanted to make sure to touch on was that the council. Sort of quasi approved. How we would be spending some of the ARBA funds from the federal government for the recovery of the COVID nineteen pandemic. What we did was we approved the list of criteria for how they'd be selected and we also. Sort of we we created a committee, but we haven't appointed formally anyone to the committee to review what a potential list might be and to forward that on to council for. For approval. Just a quick list of the criteria. There were four of them that were adopted by the council. One would be. Sustainability and capital investment. Another one would be the brick and mortar stores and businesses and other organizations, maybe not businesses that are in Snoqualmie. Another criterion was that if they could demonstrate a loss of revenue and. That the and another criterion would be that. They were serving a particular need in the community like childcare as as an example. So we did adopt that and once we have a committee formally appointed, then they will work through that. And I believe the idea is to try to get that done in fairly short order. I'm not going to give you the exact dates on when, because I don't know when the council will approve things, but the idea is to try to get these funds out to people and organizations and businesses that are in need in fairly short order. And that's all I got for you. I'd be happy to take questions.
Just curious, was there any comment or additional information about the woodman when you were downtown?
I do not believe that there is any update other than that. I. Perhaps Mr. Rogers could weigh in on this, but my understanding is that. There are no businesses currently. That are planning to inhabit the space. Is that correct?
Yes, the the woodman. Is closed and is for sale.
Oh, wow.
So. It's it's not coming back in its prior form, you know, what future form it might take, assuming somebody purchases it is, you know, to be determined.
Subject to whatever the code allows.
Any other questions, my commission?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, in this point, look to approve. The minutes of our last meeting on April eighteenth, twenty twenty two. So looking for a motion to approve those.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the minutes of April eighteenth, twenty twenty two are approved. Now we roll into other business. So I see there are no. Permit reviews, no legislative policy items, and we move into training. Cause a judicial land use training.
Yes, so. We have I have for you tonight, training on quasi judicial land use issues. This is a training that was given to the city council two months ago by. Mike. Mike Walter, who is an attorney with law firm of Keating Buckland and McCormick. He represents, among other parties, the Washington City's Insurance Authority, who. Ensures the city. Against various things. And so. Mister Mister Walter provides this training to the city council to help them understand, especially with new council members. How quasi judicial land use. Situations work and some of the things that go into them. Because the planning commission also deals with quasi judicial items. We thought it would be a very good idea to give the commission training, especially because similar to the city council, you have multiple new members. So I'm going to go through the slides were attached to the packet. So even those who are not attendance tonight can still. Of course, see them. Come on, hit the button. There we go. So you can see that that's Mr. Walter's contact information there. I would say if you have specific questions about this, you should contact myself or the city attorney, Bob Sterbank, and we can walk you through it. So I I'm going to go through Mr. Walter's slides relatively quickly. He is, of course, highly experienced in this and can speak. In a greater detail. But. One of the main reasons for this training is that. There's a lot of litigation that goes on around land use issues for better or worse. And so because of that. We, meaning staff, the planning commission, the city council, all those us involved need to be aware of, you know. What's going on? So here's a a list of, you know, what could happen if we make a mistake with quasi judicial land use issues, you know. At a minimum, you're talking about invalidating the city's decision. You were going to go through, you know, potentially a court fight. It's bad P R for, you know, for the city and for the individual decision makers. This can be very time consuming, et cetera, et cetera. So where we get the legal environment for this is that, you know, we get the state and federal constitutions. We have federal and state statutes. Those are the laws passed by the either Congress for the federal government or the state legislature for the state. We have the city's conference of plan and the updates that come with it. We have the city ordinances and resolutions. The ordinances especially are the law of the city. We have, especially when it comes to land use, various court decisions, and there are a lot of court decisions that enter into how this all works. We have, of course, then our the various board agency and commission decisions, and then we have, of course, our prior permit decisions and development agreements. In general precedent matters here that goes for the court decisions. It goes for the the permits we approve. People will often look to prior permits to say, well, you approved that two years ago. Why aren't you approving it now? So we need to be mindful of these things as we look at land use decisions. By the way, if you have any questions, feel free to either interrupt or raise your hand. You know, this is a lot of often dense material, so I'm happy to take a pause and try to explain things. So one thing to keep in mind when it comes to land use decisions is that. We're on the clock. We we can't sit there and endlessly deliberate. So we need to be mindful of keeping things moving, but we also need to, of course, make sure we're seeing the potential pitfalls here. So what the attorneys like to call high risk land use decisions. So sign regulations are a big one. Signs often involve First Amendment issues, and so we need to be mindful of those ones. Large complicated projects are great examples because you're always going to have. Various issues, whether it's traffic, whether it's, you know, light layer noise. You know, just. General environmental impacts from cutting down trees or whatever it happens to be. So so those always are are high risk ones. Anything involving wetlands, critical areas, reasonable use exceptions. Design review is a big one, and that's mostly where the planning commission comes into play because the planning commission. Does design review for the city in most cases. Then there's a few other ones. You see their historic regulations, which of course the planning commission also deals with. Homeless homeless camps, things like that. There's some additional examples here which are starting to get a little more esoteric vested rights, impact fees. Fortunately, the city doesn't. Well, fortunately or unfortunately, this city doesn't. Really have impact fees except for the school impact fee, which is passed through to the school district. Cell towers are a big one. Essential public facilities. We're fortunate in that our facilities are kind of located across the river in in a relatively out of the way place, but. We will, you know, there are other facilities close by Echo Glen is an example of an essential public facility located close to the city. It's outside the city. It's not our responsibility to permit it, but. You know, if the state wanted to locate a similar facility within the city limits, we would then be dealing with it. These are complicated issues. So when we get out down to a more basic level, what what kinds of decisions does the city make? So we have legislative quasi judicial and and what are called ministerial or administrative. So here's how they're defined here. So legislative is it's lawmaking. It's. When we're looking at the conference of plan, when we're looking at the city law. So if we were to consider, for example, defense, hide amendments, we looked at this, the plan commission looked at recently. Those are that's legislation. Because that affects the entire city. It's not limited to one property. Quasi judicial decisions, that's where the decision maker, the planning mission, the city council, hearing examiner, that's where they're acting like a judge. You're going to look at a specific case affecting a specific property. You're going to apply the facts to the law at hand and make a decision on that. Then you have the ministerial or administrative ones. These are lower level, you know, and these are pretty much the black and white. Do you meet the code? Yes or no? Period in the story. There's no discretion. There's not even any subjectivity like with design review. It's just, you know, did you submit a permit that checked all the boxes? So you saw about quasi quasi judicial decision making. As it implies, you're sitting kind of like a judge. Judges are taking in the facts and applying the facts to the law. In this case, we have a, you know, a land use application. There are discrete parties, the applicant, the city, sometimes, but not always there are opponents. And then there's almost always a public hearing involved. Here's just some more some more details of this. There's a. Section here about what it does not include. So legislative actions would be an example of, you know, but it doesn't include. Usually adopting zoning ordinances are another example. When we do. Adopt the zoning map, that's a legislative decision in almost every case. There are some exceptions to that that the courts have worked through. That's where the court the court decisions come into play. So here's some general examples subdivisions, conditional use permits. P planned unit developments. Appeals often become that because, of course, when we're talking about appeals, we're taking the record developed by the decision maker and it goes to the appeal body. So the example. You know, the what the mill site is going through right now is an example. There is an appeal of the CIPA environmental impact statement. So therefore, the hearing examiner is taking that on. Variances, reasonable use exceptions. We get down to shoreline permits are technically quasi judicial, although the planning commission doesn't decide on them. Site specific reasons. There's there's the exception on the zoning thing. When you're looking at the zoning of one specific or even a couple of specific pieces of property, that really becomes a quasi judicial action and not a legislative action because it's focused in on this those couple of properties. So we talked about the limits of quasi quasi judicial decision making. This is where. You know, they have to be guided by a decision making process that you have to take the adopted standards. And I've said this before, and in some other contexts, you're deciding permits against the codes you have, not the codes you might want. You have to use the codes. They we can't be using, you know, as it says ad hoc arbitrary or vague. Decisions, you know, you can't just say, well, we like that and therefore it's approved. It doesn't work that way. It has to. You have to find a basis in the code to approve or not approve something. And you have to then make a decision based on does it comply or not with the statutory requirements? The decision makers have to be careful to not interfere with the process here because sitting as a judge. You're not supposed to get get involved in that. So. There are certain things staff do that gets to do, and there are certain things that the decision maker gets to do. And we saw that, I think, recently where there were some things that were specifically within the the realm of the community development director and often the realm of the historic designer view board to decide on. That's an example of. The board can't get their fingers into that because it's not. It's not proper. You heard me mention delay earlier. We don't want to draw this out. You can see some examples of. Cases where the decision makers, whether it's, you know, planning commission or a council. Interfered with the staff decision process. The most recent one in that list is Mead Town Sand and Gravel versus Thurston County. In that one, the the staff was on their way toward issuing a permit to this for, you know, for sand and gravel mining, and the county council decided they didn't like that. And so they. Made them go through a process that just delayed them for years and the the court slapped them with a very, very large judgment against the county. So that's where the the. Some of the risks come into play. You can get these very large judgments potentially. You have to apply the facts to the law. There's not policy discretion here. It doesn't matter whether you like it or don't like it. It's doesn't meet the code requirements or not. So this this quote here. You can. Often boil this down to. It can be the most unpopular project ever. You can have fifty people line up to testify against it, saying, we don't like you shouldn't do this, but if it meets the standards, you have to approve it because. In this situation, in your role as a quasi judicial decision maker, your job isn't to listen to the citizens necessarily. It's not a popularity contest. It's to. Look, does it meet the standards or not? Now, certainly the public input can give you. Additional viewpoints into certain sections of the of the code or standards you maybe somebody overlooked, maybe a different way of looking at how a project. Does or doesn't conform to those standards. But at the end of the day. The standards are what they are, and you have to look at those. You have to support the decision with substantial evidence. They can't be, as the term is arbitrary and capricious. Meaning you can't just decide because you like to decide. You can't make it for reason. So you can see unsubstantiated or generalized fears of area residents. If people are afraid that a new development is going to. Make traffic worse. We understand that, and as policymakers, we're certainly concerned about that. But in the context of reviewing a permit, you have to look at the evidence available as part of the permit, you know, traffic studies, for example, and if the studies show. There won't be a big impact, then you say, we hear you, but that's what the studies. Say community dis- community displeasure is another one. Adverse and undefined the second impacts unless you have a cover vision that talks about that. So. Maybe you think it looks ugly. Well, that's not a good reason to say no to something just because you think it looks ugly. The code talks about it has this specific criteria for it's going to be this color with these materials. That's specific criteria to say. Are you meeting that or not? You can see the substantial evidence standard. You have to have sufficient evidence in the record to persuade a reasonable person that the declared premise is true. No, since it says reasonable person, it doesn't say any person. There's a that's a critical distinction there. Usually for these, we like we do written decisions with findings and conclusions. This is something we've been working. On for the past couple of years at staff level to make sure that decisions, written decisions by both staff and by planning commission are backed up by these written findings and conclusions. In a way that maybe previously we weren't doing such a great job of that. Importantly, you can't change the standards in the middle of a process. This gets into the vesting. Thing you may have seen earlier. When a project applies for permit, they get to use the rules in effect at the time they submit a complete application. We can't say. Oh, you you know, you applied two weeks ago, but we're going to change our our color palette so that red is not allowed anymore. Doesn't work that way. It's to provide certainty. It's provided for a fair process. In these, the the city decision maker doesn't represent anyone and can't take sides. So. You have to be the neutral decision maker. You can't. You're not a representative or an advocate for the applicant or any opponents or anybody else for that matter. It's you're sitting as the judge. You can see you can't submit these to a popular vote or the initiative process. So, you know. That that never happens here. And. You see the question there. Well, who who will represent the people? And the answer is in these processes, the city cannot do so. Every all sides have to represent themselves. Does this put a burden on citizens? Absolutely. There's no denying that. The way our legal processes are set up, though, that's the way it works. So I I don't mean that to sound harsh. Unfortunately, that is the reality of how our legal processes are set up. In this, we get the Appearance of Fairness Act, which we'll get into in in more detail in a moment, but the. You can see the the kind of three big takeaways here. The hearings have to both appear fair and actually be fair. You can't have background deals or off record conversations. And. You know, you and again, we're not into this arbitrary and capricious thing. So. So this is just the summary, some of the tips for the quasi judicial decisions that Mr. Walter offers, you know, follow your codes. You're not doing policymaking here. You need to recognize the vested rights. Consider all of the evidence. You don't want to dismiss evidence simply because it's inconvenient or you don't like it or. You know, maybe somebody mumbled it a bit. We can. You can always ask questions to make sure you're getting everything. You don't want to offer request or accept favors gifts or special proceeds. This is gets back to that appearance of fairness. Thing that was mentioned. As I said, it's not just about actually being fair. It's also about appearing fair. We don't want to give the impression even that somebody may or may not be biased. The time limits here are are listed out in the state. In state law. The city has some specific time limits set in place as well when dealing with permit applications. These aren't something you need to worry about too specifically, and we as staff strive hard to give the decision maker, whether it's the planning commission, the council, the here examiner. What the time limits where they're working under are, you know, do you have fourteen days? You have twenty one days, things like that. The decisions need to be neutral and applied in a nondescript discriminant manner. We can't add conditions about the financial viability of a project, whether they're technically capable of executing the project or not. Whether they'll give us proprietary information or if they'll waive legal rights. So if we if we we couldn't say hypothetically. Well, we'll approve your project if you prove to us that you can actually financially build it. That's a complete no no. Whether they can. For the bill or not is not something we can even consider. We see this happening with projects all the time where we will approve or or rather make a decision on a project, and then it never gets built. We approve it. It's a go forth and nothing happens because. They couldn't get their financing together. They decide they really didn't want to do the project, whatever the reason, but that's not our. It's not the city's decision to make. We never want to get involved in the private property agreements, C C Rs, homeowners agreements, things like that. That's not the city. The city's not party to any of those agreements, so we don't insert ourselves. We try to treat the the permanent applicants. Equally inconsistently. But we're also careful. We're not trying to promise or guarantee certain things in conversations. You'll often hear staff be. You know, we'll say, assuming the council does this or, you know, presuming this, but keep in mind it may not happen. We're adding those caveats because we we're not. We can't guarantee anything because it's not. At the end of the day, some of these decisions aren't staffs to make. They're the councils, the planning commissions, the hearing examiners. Good written findings and conclusions. We talked about this a little bit before. We're we're working hard to make that a little. A little more consistent with us. You've heard about the citizen complaints, community displeasure. We are trying very hard to use a hearing examiner for more things. You the some of you who have been around may recall the plat procedures code amendment from a few years ago. Where we adjusted the decision making process for for subdivisions. At the time, both preliminary plats and final plats required the approval of the city council. That's no longer the case. Now they're approved or rather preliminary plat is approved by the hearing examiner and a final plat is approved administratively by staff because that's more of just a checklist. Did you do this? Yes or no? The effort there is to take those decisions out of the count directly out of the council's hands because it's it's difficult for city councils to be in these positions because. Council city councils are fundamentally political bodies. They're made up of politicians. They're considering policy. Pushing them into this quasi judicial role is is difficult for them because they have to. Do things differently. Not saying they can't do it, but it's hard. You can't base decisions on what's good for the community, the best interest of the city. Those are political questions. Those are policy questions. You have to look at evidence in the record and and remember, you know, to to hearken back to something that the current chief justice of the U S Supreme Court said, you know, he's the empire calling balls and strikes here. That's what you're doing in a quasi judicial decision making context. You're looking for code compliance. You're not taking sides. You're just call calling those those balls and strikes. So we're keeping politics out. We can't waive any code requirements unless the code specifically allows for it. So you'll see it's sections that, you know, we can do this, you know, sometimes we can. We have discretion to. Apply things in a different way or even waive them. But barring that, we shouldn't be doing that. We we can't sit here and say, oh, you don't have to imply with the landscape requirements. That's not the way this works. We're careful to not let citizens, as they say, taint the record because. Most of our commissions allow for. Public comment sections and and the language we use is specific. Public comments were items not on the agenda. That language is specific for that reason. We don't want people commenting on things that are on the agenda because we either provide a public comment. Time for those or they're not allowed for permits. Now, I think the last one is one of the more important ones. You know, if we need, if you feel like we need advice from the attorney, we can do that. We can arrange for the city attorney to, to show up. We can even go into executive session if needed so that we can get some advice on these things. So arbitrary and capricious decision making, you can see it defined here. Willfully and reasonably without consideration and disregard for the facts or circumstances. So what are some of the results of these wrongful decision makings? Well, if it's found to be arbitrary and capricious, the decision is considered invalid. There are some sections of state law and the federal law that could provide a basis for damages. Potentially, we're looking at personal liability. That's a little more rare, I'll admit, but you know, the potential is there. The city then has to run through the, the time and the cost of redoing a process and decision. Even if you end up at the, with the same decision, you still have to redo it properly without whatever went wrong happening. And then, of course, we have the, the PR issue of, you know, now we've affected public confidence in the city and our process. So here's some examples, you can read through them, you know, failing make finds and conclusions, ignoring evidence, basing decisions on NIMBY complaints or issues, ignoring the city attorney's advice. This has happened before. It's unfortunately, I'm sure going to happen again, hopefully not here. A few more examples, you know, applying legislative policies or goals to the, to these decisions, putting things to a popular vote, stalling permits or decisions. These are all examples of arbitrary and capricious decisions. So some tips to avoid, you know, we've been, and, and these are things we've already talked about in this presentation. Don't make, don't make things up or don't guess. It's always okay to ask the question, you know, what does the code say exactly? Or what, what is, what is the applicant proposing? We can always get the information. You know, don't do policymaking here. Make sure you're considering all the evidence. When we're doing this, don't disregard certain things to get to a decision that you might want to make versus a decision you maybe should make. We're trying to use hearing examiner for all these things. And again, don't base decisions on what's good for the community necessarily. So now we get to design review. This is where a lot of pitfalls can come into play because design review is often subjective, as you well know. And this is where the planning commission is going to spend most of its quasi judicial decision making time. This slide shows here the case of Anderson versus Esquad from 1993. And you can, you can read through the facts there. In short, Esquad used as a design commission back in 1993. And this design commission reviewed the design of buildings. They, that commission denied a, essentially denied a building permit based on aesthetic design. But the court held that the city's aesthetic design standards were, first of all, unconstitutionally vague. And so that left the design commissioners to rely on their own subjective feelings about whether the design met requirements or not. So the decision was that the denial of the permit was arbitrary. The approval was granted and the design standards were unconstitutionally vague. And the way they were applied was unconstitutional arbitrary. So the city was found liable for damages and attorney's fees for the arbitrary and capricious denial of the permit. So this case is still cited frequently in architectural and design review court cases. It's still considered good law. If you want to read it, you can look these up, these cases up on Google Scholar, by the way. Go to scholar.google.com. Make sure you click on a court decisions and Washington state courts. And you can just put in Anderson v Esquad and it'll pop up. Then you can read the whole thing and it, in all its gory detail about what exactly the Esquad design commission did. So again, identifying some of the problems and mistakes here. Well, they had, they had a vague and they had a vague code. You know, they're talking about quality of designs and, and harmony. And, you know, you can see evaluation of a project shall be based on the quality of its design and relationship to the natural setting of the valley and surrounding mountains. What does that even mean? We all, we can all come up with, we can all ascribe some meaning to it, but it's going to be subjective. The way I interpret versus the way the chair is going to interpret versus the way another commissioner is going to interpret it. It's all gonna be a little different every time. But non-nive design shall be avoided. What does that, again, what does it mean? Color shall be harmonious. This is why we have a color palette for the historic district because a standard like that is no standard at all. We need to be able to point to, here's the approved color palette, use those. And then you get into the, you know, the personal opinions of the, of the design commission members. You know, talk about the city making a statement on its signature street. This was located on Gilman Boulevard, close to the intersection with Front Street, which is still, of course, one of the main intersections in the city of Esquad even today. You know, you can see some of the examples of their subjective feelings. The building is not compatible with Gilman. Well, why is it not? The paint color may be too dark. That doesn't, you know, that, that's not enforced, that doesn't provide a useful input. You know, there's a certain feeling you get when you drive along Gilman Boulevard and this building does not give the same feeling. Again, how's an applicant supposed to respond to these? On top of that, they had almost two years of meetings and applications and hearings and revisions. And then they had at least four hearings or meetings on the same project that gave different results each time. This is where we get into the whole delay issue. They, they spent all this time, they give, they gave them completely different input every, every time. So they never had any clear guidance. And as you can see at the bottom here, it, these changes in hearings cost development over a quarter million dollars. And this is, you know, 30 years ago. Can you imagine what it would be in today's dollars? So this is, Mr. Walter went through and highlighted some of the, the sections in the city's code related, relating to design review. So you can see at the top, that's chapter 1780, which is the design review board section. And that the highlighted one contains the review guidelines. Excuse me. And then there's chapter 1735, the historic district regulations, which the commission has been pretty, has been applying quite a bit of late on historic design review. And there, there's a, a long list there. We also have the city's forum based mixed use regulations, which the city hasn't really ever had a chance to apply despite that code being in place for a few years now. So some tips for design and architectural review. You know, you've seen some of these things before. So I won't really, really read them. But needless to say, one thing we are closely looking at is, well, what are the standards and are, is it possible to consistently and relatively objectively apply them? So that we're, we're not leaving the planning commission in the role of trying to have to apply the subjective opinions without anything to back it up. And we, we talked about that in the context of the historic downtown relook. You know, we, we, there was a lot of discussion about can we apply this? Is this a good standard? Does it say shall versus should, things like that? The record. So the record is all the documentation about a project and it needs to be factual. So you can see here, here's some things that could go in there. You have the application and all this supporting documentation, the drawings, the written materials, et cetera. You have any environmental determination we're going to make. There's a staff report. You can have the various comment letters that people submit. You know, when, whether they're saying, you know, they could be saying, I don't like the project. It's not maybe particularly helpful from a, from a standpoint of trying to apply the code to the project, but it's still a statement by somebody of, well, I don't like the project. And so it's part of the record. We get any minutes or transcripts of the relevant hearings. The decision criteria is also part of the record. And then, of course, the findings, findings and conclusions supporting what the decision, whatever it may be. So the findings of fact, getting specifically into this, the, the findings, as we called them earlier. So finds a factor, as they say, it's fact. We're going to make specific factual findings to say, well, here we, we find this, we find that. And, you know, the project will have, you know, five residential units. The project will have 20,000 square feet of, of office use. Those are findings of fact. These are required by state law or city code for permits like these ones. So you need to have a finding to support each criteria for approval or denial or condition. So if you have a standard that says buildings shall be red, well, we are going to need to make a finding of fact to say, that says the applicant is proposing a building that is red. If you don't have that finding, then you can't then make a decision to say the project complies with the code or not, because you have no finding about what color the building is. Maybe the building is yellow, but we never made the finding. So that, that would be an example of an issue. You know, these finds and conclusions, they show the thinking process used here. And you have to support them with evidence in the record. So there's no guessing or making things up. The example here is, is several years ago, there was a proposed conditional use permit for a restaurant in the old bank building across the street from City Hall. And the, the project applicant didn't show up at the public hearing in front of the hearing examiner. And because the applicant didn't show up, the hearing examiner could not make findings supporting a project approval. They were left with a lack of information, could not show that the project met the code criteria and therefore had to deny the permit. Applicant appealed to city council, goes to city council on appeal, but the record in front of the council on the appeal didn't have any information on whether the project met the code criteria. Now, so the council had to uphold the appeal. That's an example of why these findings matter. And so you can see, these are some examples of findings that are not defensible. You know, those that are based on a belief or a feeling or an assumption. Summaries of evidence presented or not, appropriate findings need to be specific. Finds or conclusions based on assumption of future non-compliance with conditions. This comes up quite a bit in commerce, in, in permits in Snopkalmy sometimes. We can't presume that somebody is going to violate the code. Even if they have in the past, a specific applicant say. So we can't make a finding, we can't consider that. It's, you know, they have, they're presumed to be follow code every time. And if they don't, we have a process for addressing that. Again, you can't make fines related to the owner. You can make it to the land itself. And then, of course, there's the community displeasure one coming into play again. So here's some examples of, of, as Mr. Walter called them risky words, they're vague, they're ambiguous, you know, feelings, beliefs, impressions, moods, things like that. Then you see the mandatory words we've discussed, shall or will or must required. And then the advisory, the optional ones, should or may or can. So we're very, we're, we try to be very careful in drafting the code to say what we mean. If we want somebody to do something, we're going to use the word shall. If we want somebody to consider doing something, maybe we'll use the word should and recognize that they could tell us, no, we're not going to do it. And then we don't have anything to back it up. Now, the appearance, the appearance of fairness doctrine, we referred to this a little bit earlier. This, the, this doctrine is in state law. You can see a citation down there, RCW 42.23.070 subsection three. So this isn't something the courts have made up. This is, this is something the state legislature has put in there. So this came out of the Watergate scandal and loss of public trust in government. So there was a fear of biased decision makers. There's fears of, you know, bribery of officials, of self-interested decision making. And so it got codified in state law. And you can see the purpose and goal, preserve the integrity of the judicial and the administrative system, provide fairness to parties and prevent bias and antagonistic decision making. So it's required for all quasi judicial meetings, hearings, decisions. So, you know, if it's quasi judicial, this is going to apply. And importantly, the hearing and decision have to be fair in fact. They have to actually be fair and they have to appear fair to others. So you, so you, that's to say, we couldn't go in there and have somebody expressing clear displeasure about a project throughout the entire hearing, a decision maker that is, and then go turn around and vote to approve it. Yes, they may have made, at the end of the day, the right call to approve because it conformed to the code. But their clear pattern through the entire hearing was one of, was one of bias. And, and that's not okay, that it would expose the city and the decision making body to legal action, that they were, that they were a biased decision maker. So you can see the test at the bottom there. Would a reasonable person apprised of the totality of a member's personal interests or involvement be reasonably justified in thinking that the involvement might affect the member's judgment? This is why you'll hear the city attorney often question, do you have a financial interest in a property? Do do you or, or your company do business with the applicant or any of the applicant's companies? We're looking for, we're, we're looking for conflicts of interest there. We're looking for things that may be, actually be conflicts of interest or could even appear to be a conflict of interest. So things that are prohibited, prejudgment bias or appearance of partiality, like I was just referring to. Business relationships, social marital, ex parte communications. These are communications where you're talking to just say project opponents or just to the project applicant. Those communications need to be disclosed so that both sides or all parties rather have the benefit of hearing those communications and can respond to them. Membership in organizations, personal benefit, or even, you know, hostile root or antagonistic comments. Now, where these all fall on the spectrum of, of, of things, of course, will vary. Just because you're married to somebody doesn't automatically disqualify you or, or mean you have to, you know, start disclosing every single communication you have with your spouse. But it's things, some of these things are, you need to be mindful of them. And so you see, here's, here's the rule on ex parte contacts. So opponents proponents during the, or no ex parte contacts with opponents or proponents during the pendus, pendency of a quasi judicial action. This can apply even when there's no formal application submitted. If we have knowledge of potential plans, et cetera. Usually the way to cure these ex parte contacts is to disclose the substance of the communication on the record and offer the other party or other parties a rebuttal. There are some exceptions to the Appearance of Fairness Act. One of them is the doc, what's called the doctrine of necessity. So it's theoretically possible to, for opponents or proponents to challenge the continued participation of a majority or a quorum of a decision making body. So hypothetically, somebody's going to come in and say, well, you four commissioners had these conversations with the developer and I don't think you can, you can be trusted to be unbiased. And so you all have to recuse yourself. Well, now the commission language, it doesn't have a quorum, can't actually operate. The doctrine of necessity says, well, everybody can come back and we can proceed to make a decision. Campaign statements or contributions are also exceptions. Those speak to your free speech rights. So just because you donated to a particular politician doesn't automatically disqualify you from being part of a decision making body. The big rule here, if in doubt about a potential appearance of fairness issue or ex parte communications, you disclose it. You want to disclose at the earliest opportunity on the record. So you don't just want to tell me in a, in an email at 11 o'clock at night, you want to do it in a meeting where we're recording it, where everybody's present to hear. You want to do all, disclose all the important details, you know, who, what, where, when. It can help to have a pre-prepared disclosure statement. Importantly, and this is more of a legal thing, we don't need to worry about, but if nobody objects at the time of disclosure, then they can't later come back and then object to it or challenge it. Certainly that'd be present to be able to potentially challenge it. But this is designed to avoid, you know, people getting toward the end of a, you know, say we've gone through three weeks of hearings on a, on a proposal. Suddenly, one, one party comes in and says, well, based on all these things you disclosed three weeks ago prior to the start of the hearing, I'm going to challenge you now. Not the way that works. Emails and social media. So this is where you need to be mindful of the State Public Records Act. Everything we're doing in our official duties is public record. Now, certainly there are exceptions with, built into the Public Records Act. But those are pretty limited. You know, you can see it identifies attorney client privilege being one of the big ones. There are some other exemptions, but in general, you're going to find, you know, if I send you an email about a project, that's a public record. And it's almost certainly going to be disclosable. In litigation, it's also likely discoverable. So we need to be cautious of, you know, serial meetings is a good example. That's kind of what we're referring to here with rolling emails or text messages or Facebook. You want to avoid having discussion of any kind about projects at all. Don't post about it on social media or Facebook or anywhere. Don't send, you know, if you're going to send emails, you always want to send emails to staff. You have questions, you send it to You have questions, you send it to me and, and. You know, it's my job to clarify things or distribute information to the commission. You don't want to just email the commission and say, hey, did any of you hear about this? That's where we get into Open Public Meetings Act issues, we get into Appearance of Fairness issues. You can see about. Libel and slander. Need to be cautious of that. And then, of course, we already mentioned OPMA, you can see a couple of examples there in one. The council was exchanging emails where an action was taken and then in another one, the emails are subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. And there is, and there is constant litigation about the open public, about, excuse me, the Public Records Act. You know, people are always filing Public Records Act requests for, for information and sometimes the cities mess up and they end up in litigation. So. PRA, the legal world of PRA is constantly changing by, by bits and pieces. We stay up to date on the city attorney and the city clerk are always on top of these things. So if you ever have questions about it, you should feel free to contact, I'd start with the city clerk. She's your best point of contact and then we can, if, if she doesn't know, then we can figure it out. So consequences for violating the Appearance of Fairness Act, again, invalidating the decision. Potential claims on the city for damages, attorney's fees, and then, of course, the other, you know, impacts of that embarrassment and loss of public confidence. We're almost done, we're getting there. I know this is a very long presentation, so thanks for sticking, sticking with it, I forgot what eight more slides, I think. So how to comply? Well, we need to be aware of this, that's what this training is for. Aware of the Appearance of Fairness doctrine, we need to be avoiding bias, we need to be disclosing things when we're needed. We want to avoid these communications upfront if possible, that way there's nothing to disclose, we don't have to worry about that. Again, when in doubt, disclose, 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 it's always better to disclose something so we can avoid the issue or deal with it. Always think of the consequences to the city and the process, not just to yourself. You can see the steps to compliance there. And then, just the last few things, I'll move through these quickly, public hearings and public meetings. So the Regulatory Reform Act, you can see, authorizes one, what's called open record hearing and one closed record appeal. So what we mean by an open record hearing is. A here, a here where the, the hearing body or the hearing officer, so the planning commission, the city council or hearing examiner. Can take testimony and submission of evidence and information. In a closed record proceeding, we're not taking new information. The record is, the record is what it is, there's no new facts getting thrown in and the, the appeal body has to consider the information. They've got to render a decision on that appeal, it's designed to make the process fair. So in this, in these cases, you can see it says, no or limited new evidence or information allowed to be submitted and only appeal argument allowed. So we're talking about, you know, legal, legal arguments effectively, or how you would interpret the information already in the record and apply it to the code. So how to conduct hearings, and we've been through some of this already. You know, we have some procedures. And you can see at the bottom, suggested order of presentation for these contested hearings, you know, we'll get a staff report first. We can get a presentation from the applicant, or in the case of appeal, the appellant. Then we get a presentation by the opponents to the application. Then we get a rebuttal. And then, at some other times, there might be some other agencies or planning staff involved, but we have some pretty specific stand procedures we go through for this that we've used before. Our code has the one open record, one closed record appeal procedure built into it. We, again, try to use the hearing examiner for as many things as possible because the hearing examiner is a trained individual. Who has vast experience doing these kinds of things. These are more applicable to these big complex projects. These, these tips for hearings and meetings, one thing I do want to emphasize is that we're going to be making some, some adjustments to how we do design review process. To treat them a little more formally than we have in the past. So you're going to see some of these things come into play in design review a little more, so a little more formality to them. The plan creation doesn't have to worry too much about closed record because the plan commission is an appeal body, I believe, for only one type of thing. So in general, you're not going to have to worry about it, we, we deal with this with the hearing examiner and with the city council for the most part. Then here are Mr. Walter's final takeaways that you can read through, I'm not going to read them all. But that is the presentation. So I'm happy to take questions, I know that was an awful lot of information to throw at you all at once and I see that I wasn't paying attention to Commissioner Smith is here too, so let me get him in. Sorry about.
Did he hear the presentation?
Yeah, I don't know how long he's been here, he can, he'll have to tell us, but he, he probably heard most of that.
Okay, as long as he could hear it.
Yep, thank, thank you, Jason, I've been here since the very beginning, so.
Perfect.
I didn't want to bother you, run a roll.
That's okay. So that's, that's the presentation, like I said, I can, I'd have to answer questions, I will say. It's usually better to try to speak in hypotheticals for things like this. If we're going to refer to specific projects, it's best to refer to ones that were, that are from the past, that have already been approved, built, things like that, because they're not at issue. Certain things that are moving through process right now would be best to stay away from, just because they're still active projects.
So I have a question, and I'm referring only to past experience, nothing, nothing ongoing. And it's in relation to the public comments on what you have open for public comments. Sometimes the comments are on point to a specific regulation, but quite often, they are emotional, personal. You know, ad hominem, in other words, something that you say, thank you very much, and you move on. And I wondered if there would be some. Education of the public that would be suitable for the, what is quasi judicial? I mean, because quite frankly, you know, it's not constructive to a group of volunteers, you know, trying to do their duty in a quasi judicial arrangement. To, you know, anyway, you hear a lot of that, so I think everyone knows what I'm talking about. But I'm just curious, is there some education for public comments other than, you know, other than thank you very much and you just move on?
Yeah, you know, I would say that, that is a tough one because, you know, we can put some information out there, but there's no guarantee anybody ever reads it. We do, so, so I'm screen sharing again, this is, this, this is the agenda and you can see this text here we have. This is. A very, very broad, basic. Basically saying, these are quasi judicial without using those words, you know, public comment may be limited or not allowed for some or all of these items due to the nature of the. Approval process. Now, that's a tiny text on the agenda, so I understand people may not necessarily read that. But we also try to identify these items when they do come up on the agenda to say, this is quasi judicial, so we can't have people necessarily speaking about outside of a public hearing. So with that, and I think the city clerk has some additional input here too.
Thank you, Jason, I was just going to share. Forgive me for interrupting, I'm listening to all the background while I'm working on something else, but we include some language in the mayor's script that she reads. Before each public. Before the public comment period, and that may be something that we could get to you, Mr. Chairman, that you could use. It helps, admittedly, in all the years I've been doing this and Jason's been doing this. Sometimes all the coaching that we can do with the public, in other words, is. Doesn't get heard over the emotions of the individual, but we do have text that we can share with you that sometime, that might help educate in that moment. That I can pass on to Jason to share with you.
Sure, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, and it's, you know, if you ever listen to the city council meetings, it's, you've heard the mayor, both Mayor Larson and Mayor Ross now. Say it, the words are the same. And so it is helpful to at least provide some context to the public. Those who hear it all the time are kind of like, yeah, yeah, we know, get on with it, but, but it is important because it does lay that groundwork. We also have script language regarding quasi judicial. Permits that come, that come up, that, that we can dig up and, and provide. So we can look at that too.
Okay. Any other questions, oh, Commissioner Alef?
Could we talk through like a specific grounded example, hypothetical one? On Appearance of Fairness and how to, if, if I know that I have a conflict of interest. How to do that appropriately and on the record, so I'll make something up, my, my neighbor is building something. Maybe I hold the loan on their house or paper on it. That is potential for a conflict of interest, I see it's on the agenda, I do not send you an email because that would not be in an open session. The meeting starts, when do I raise my conflict of interest?
Right, it's a good question. So usually, what, what is done when, say, the council. Here is something quasi judicial, as the city attorney will go through and ask a series of questions, I believe there's three or four questions he'll ask. And it'll have each council member respond in, in sequence. And it's about, do you have financial interest, do you, you know? Do you have any, you know, do you do any business with these people, you know, things like, the same things I identified? I think what we're going to look to do is. Add a, it'll essentially be a variation of that for the, for the, when the planning commission considers. Any kind of permit, whether it's design review or, or what have you. It won't be the city attorney in most cases, it'll likely be, be me running through it. But what we'll do is that'll provide an opportunity for commissioners to disclose anything. Because the other part of these questions is, first you disclose, but then, one of the further questions is. Do you believe, you the commissioner, do you believe that this disclosure you just made affects your ability to be an impartial decision maker? And you can answer however you want, I mean, if you feel that you can't be impartial, then you should say so and recuse yourself. But if you feel you can be an impartial decision maker, despite whatever disclosure you made, you should say, I know I can be impartial. Now, somebody, an opponent or proponent of the project could then challenge that, in which case, you know, we would go on through that process. But that's what we will be looking to do and that's when we provide the opportunity for those disclosures. It's basically prior to getting into reviewing whatever it is.
Great, thanks for the clarification, that's more than what I needed, I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Questions?
I'm sure Tesman has his hand up.
Oh, good.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully you didn't say it and I missed it, but I was looking at slide sixteen. And the good thing with that slide is it outlines, you know, what exactly timely is. And so my only question was, do we have different timelines than those listed by the, by the Washington Code?
The, the state law ones in general are minimums and so where a lot of our timing comes into play is in. It'll be in Title fourteen, which is titled Development Review and there's. There's some things that say, you know, we have, you know, twenty eight days to make a determinate, what's called a determination of completeness. You know, did they give us everything we need to review an application? Then we have a certain number of days to provide a notice application, you know, it's been fourteen days. And these are mostly procedural things that staff is going to deal with. And that the commission is not generally going to have to worry about, you know, there's some things in there about how long do public comment periods have to be. I think where we. You know, there are. For, for appeals. For example, we would say, you know. You know, these types of appeals, the decisionator has sixty days to decide or forty five days to decide, so we would tell you that upfront. The hundred and twenty day limitation to make a decision is in state law and it's mirrored in the city code. It says, you know, it's, it's in fourteen point thirty point one twenty. Up here, so you can see it. So this is, this is where it says it. But as you can see, it has a number of specific exclusions to the hundred and twenty days, so it's not like we get a permit, you determine to complete and now we have. You know, four months to figure this out. You know, anytime we send them comments and say, you need to fix these things or respond to these comments, the clock stops. If we're preparing an environmental impact statement, the clock stops. You know, these appeal periods, not exceeding sixty days, you know, the clock stops, so. And then there's also, of course, the catchall, any extension that's mutually agreed to by the city and applicant. So I will say for the, for almost everything the planning commission would be dealing with. Four months is a lot of time, I can't think of anything recently that took. More than that. You know, because you're, you're largely looking at, for example, sign, you're doing sign review in the historic district, for example, those, those come pretty quickly. Some of the design review things you're going to look at aren't, you know. We staff might be discussing a project with them for a month or so before it gets to the planning commission. But then the planning commission will see it, you're going to make a decision on it, it's going to take you no more than four weeks to do that, so. In general, the time periods for, specifically to the planning mission, aren't going to be of a huge concern. But we are mindful of them, absolutely.
I'm sorry, is that, is that good place to?
That's great, thank you, thank you.
I had another question about, I was kind of racking my brains on things we've done in the past. So if you look at the example of when the new high school opened, that we had all those high school students to talk about changing the. Road to Wildcat Way and then we had the neighbors talk about it. And at the end of that, we made a recommendation based on options to the council. Is there cases where we make recommendations? That are quasi judicial, because it seems like in those cases where you're making a recommendation to the council to make a decision. They're not quasi judicial, is that a fair read of it?
The one situation where the planning commission will make a quasi judicial recommendation to the city council is on planned commercial industrial. Plans, actually, I take that back, there's two, there's PCI plans, Salish expansion is a great example there. And then mixed use final plan, so if we were ever to get another snow quality ridge type of development where they're going for a mixed use final plan. The planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council and the council would decide.
In the Wildcat Way, here's the three options, here's one we recommend, that was purely non- quasi judicial, true?
Correct, that was considered legislative.
Right.
Because street names are, are a legislative act for the city, for the city council. And strictly speaking, they didn't even have to ask the planning commission's opinion, it was just convenient for them to do it that way. So there were, there was no, there's no Appearance of Fairness issues with, with legislative actions. There's no, all these quasi judicial rules about, about, you know, you have to have these hearings and provide disclosures, none of that applies in legislative. It, it's not like it's an anything goes because, you know, Open Public Meetings Act still applies, for example. But it's much, the, the rules are much reduced for legislative.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Don't see any hands up. Okay, if we think of one after the fact, just a reminder, send it directly to Jason and then we can discuss in a meeting after he receives it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So. See, the next one is just a reminder of the parliamentary procedure training coming up on June fourteenth. You should have all received the email and the invitation from the city clerk, so hopefully you can all attend. Then the next one is the hybrid meeting discussion. So the city council has been having some discussions about this and made some decisions at their last meeting. The city council is going to, as soon as practical, go shift to a hybrid meeting format where the council will largely be in person. Probably a good chunk of the staff will be in person in city council chambers. We will continue to provide essentially a Zoom option for remote participation and for people to tune in at home if they so choose. Of whether it's by phone or, or on their computers. The council committees are also heading in that direction where they are going to start meeting in person with a remote option. What we're looking at for the commissions is, and Deb, the city clerk is here and she can provide more. What we're looking at for the commissions is, and and Deb, the city clerk is here, and she can provide more details. There, we're looking at some changes in the Open Public Meetings Act and the expiration of the emergency proclamation that has allowed us to conduct fully remote meetings for the past two years. And so that proclamation is going to expire on June 1st. Yeah.
The last day in May, June 1st, is when the requirement to all the physical location will go into effect.
All right. So what we're looking at is, starting June 1st, we will need to provide a physical location for members of the public to come and at least, you know, and view the meeting. That doesn't necessarily mean that anybody beyond a staff member has to physically be there. We are getting some additional clarification. So this is not necessarily the final word. MRC is working on it and the municipal clerks association is working on this to get some more details figured out. What this all means is that we're we're in a place now where the the plan commission. So I guess to lay the options out, we can go back to the meeting is essentially defaults to in person will have the remote participation available. And anybody who could wants to, you know, could certainly take advantage of that. We could go with a more hybrid approach where, yes, well, we will ensure compliance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Somebody will physically be there, whether and maybe it's just, it ends up being just me sometimes. Who's physically sitting there in council chambers to provide that physical presence. And all of you can stay on Zoom, be remote if you so choose. But those are really the options on the table here. Within that, the commission, you know, you as the commission can kind of work out, how do you want to structure your meetings? I think what we're aiming for is to provide some level of consistency. So that the public knows what to expect. You all, as fishers know what to expect, we as staff know what to expect. But we recognize the flexibility is still important. We've grown used to it over the past two years, for better or worse. And we know that, you know, I mean, Fisher Smith, you had, you had a conflict earlier. And so you couldn't get here quite on time. And maybe it's easier to just run home and jump on Zoom versus running down to City Hall. I mean, I'm not trying to pick on you, just using as an example. So you know, we have another meeting to figure this out. So you don't need to make any decisions tonight. But it would be good for you to start the discussion. So we can figure out how we're going to approach this.
Last month, we talked about the fact that the council was going down the path of the hybrid meetings and would hear how that's going. Have they had one yet? And how's it working?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
It's a, it's definitely a work in progress right now. They recognize that we are ironing out some logistics as far as technology staffing. Meeting assignments, you know, right now we have these high, these remote meetings, which gives us a little bit more flexibility. So now we need to be looking at if we have multiple evenings, one evening, we stagger them in different rooms, things like that. We are taking a report to council. Like I said, it is a work in process. We've identified this is where we're at right now. This is where we hope to be next week, so on and so forth. But with the changes that the governor's office has made for having to move rather rapidly to comply with the new requirements and I think of it kind of much like when COVID happened, it was really awkward for everybody to make the shift out of in-person meetings. And I think after two plus years of doing this, it's going to be equally awkward for all of us to shift back. So we're just asking for everybody to patient right now while we navigate this and we we commit that we'll keep all of you informed. And Jason will work with you all through keep everybody aware of what what council is doing as we move forward with this.
Okay. Well, I mean, again, open further commentary, but I think the the nirvana would be a hybrid meeting to allow in person where practical, but yet still allow somebody to be in on video. And that might not be, that might not work. I do know, having recently attended some in-person meetings that used to be Zoom for years, it's it's a very different, I think, more productive experience when you when you do it that way. So what's that?
You think it's more productive when we're in Zoom?
No, actually, in person. I I think there's, there's better communication. And but anyway, but but I think the preference would be hybrid if it could be technically handled. So
And that's what council wants. Council wants us to be hybrid. We're just navigating that, what all that's going to take. And what changes we need to make to technology. We we have had, I am not familiar with all of you. I know that we have boards and commissions, other boards and commissions. We have individuals who have volunteered who it works better for them to work from home. Whether it's somebody who's caring for children or an elderly parent or whatever the case may be. So obviously, we as a society has changed as a result of Zoom and hybrid isn't going away.
No. I see a Christopher Alef as the head up.
Just out of curiosity, what sort of accommodations did you provide for hybrid participation prior to the pandemic?
Prior to the pandemic, the the main option was people could call in via telephone. We we didn't utilize Zoom at that point or Teams or any other option. So the council certainly allowed remote, you know, participation by telephone. The planning commission did it. That remains an option. I think in the current environment, it's a little, you know, we can certainly do it. It's just a little trickier in some respects, easier to get somebody on Zoom because that, you know, as the city clerk said, the direction we have from council is to go toward hybrid meetings. So we're going to be providing the Zoom option pretty much no matter what, even if there's literally nobody on it. Because it's a way for people to tune in, you know, the public, frankly, to tune in from their homes. Prior, you know, pre-COVID, we were broadcasting city council meetings and only city council meetings on YouTube. Now we broadcast, you know, we're broadcasting everything on Zoom. So there doesn't seem to be a desire to move away from that. And and we want to preserve the option for people to participate remotely should, you know, as the city clerk was saying, should they have a need to do so, whether it's, you know, for whatever reason, whether it's medical reasons, childcare reasons. Just they're scheduled, that's, you know, that's the way their schedule worked out, or they really, really, really want to call into a meeting when they're on business in Boston, or, you know, whatever happens to be.
Okay. You have the comments this time? The the next council meeting, is it, will it be hybrid?
Yes, the next council meeting will be hybrid. If you're participating remotely, your view is a little bit hampered. We only have two cameras in the in the council chambers right now. But it will be hybrid.
Okay, okay. And when when is that meeting?
It's Monday.
Okay.
So if you want to get a feel for what it'll look like, at least from a you know, from a tuning in remotely, whether you're a member of the public watching or or looking to be a participant, you can, you you should at least watch part of it to just see what it looks like. We recognize it's it's a work in progress. And it then and things will likely change over the coming months as we get some new equipment and refine our our procedures on this a bit.
Okay, good.
So mainly, we'd ask that you get, you give this some thought over the next couple of weeks. We'll have this discussion again at your next meeting on the 16th. And get set, get this nailed down, hopefully a little bit more, at least what we're going to try to do at the, at the, starting in June. And recognize it, it's likely going to shift on us as we, as we move forward.
Okay. Good, good. We'll do that. So if no other comments on that topic, we'll move on to the next agenda item, upcoming schedule. I'm sorry, I skipped items of client interest. Let's just go there. So I'd like to poll the commissioners and see if there's items of interest that we want to record. No particular order. Commissioner Alef, do you have any items? Commissioner Smith?
I can't think of any at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
None.
Commissioner Testman?
None for me. Thank you.
Okay. I've just, I've recurring thing, I'm just curious. The remainder of the IGA, is that
Yeah, there are active permits on that. I thought they would have started by now, but they're they're held up for for reasons beyond the city's control on their construction for that. But it's a daycare facility that will be going in there. If you were looking, if you really want excitement, they are likely to have a signed deviation at community development committee in two weeks, probably. So that project is definitely moving forward.
Okay. That was all ahead. So then let's move on to upcoming schedule.
There's nothing listed there. We are likely to have a a designer review board item for your next meeting. This will just be a regular designer review board, not a historic designer review item. And then there are some, there are some particular code amendments there that we're working on, but I don't believe they're going to be ready for commission review in two weeks. So at the moment, just the design review item. And I think, you know, similar to what I was talking to tonight as part of the training, I think we're going to try to institute some of the some of the changes to our process starting at that meeting. So you'll, you'll, you'll hear the 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 quasi judicial disclosures and we're likely going to schedule a formal public hearing for it. And and try to have a better staff report and findings and conclusions lined up for that one. So again, that that'll be a work in progress, but we are moving in that direction.
Okay. All right. Well, we've now come to the end of the agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.